All right, good evening. Go ahead and call the city council meeting for the city of Temecula to order today's, August 14th, 2018. Wanted to start by thanking George and Darius Fields in the back there for our prelude music this evening. And we are going to start with an invocation by city manager Aaron Adams. And I'd like to invite Remy De Parre and his colleagues to the microphone after the invocation to provide our flag salute this evening. If we could all stand, Mr. Adams.
Please bow your head. Dear me Father Lord, we just give you thanks for this day, for this opportunity to serve. We thank you, Lord, for the city of Temecula and the privilege it is to convene in a public meeting and to serve our residents. And we just pray for wisdom and discernment for the city council, for the city staff, for our first responders, Lord. We just ask you continue to keep them safe and watch over them. And we thank you for all the good work that's being done with the wildfires in this last two weeks, Lord. And we just pray for continued safety. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everyone, right hand over your heart. He's joining the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you very much. All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Comaturo. Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Nigara is absent. Councilmember Stewart. Mayor Ron.
I am here. All right, first up, we have a presentation of certificate of achievement to Justin Ree, Troop 304, for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. If you could join us at the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself and tell us what your project was for Eagle Scout.
Hello, my name is Justin Ree, and I want to thank you for this recognition and I'm proud to represent the city of Temecula as an Eagle Scout. And for my project, what I did was, there's a community organization called Kids Court and Counseling, and I helped build a courtroom diorama to help kids who are to testify in court get more familiar with the courtroom before actually having to appear in court. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. We have Councilmember Stewart here to present you with the proclamation.
So we have this nifty, nifty certificate for you that you can put on your wall, and we have this special pin that only goes to Eagle Scouts in Temecula. So there's not a whole lot of these out there, so if you collect pins, this is a good one to have. So, there you go, congratulations. Thank you, thank you very much.
Hey, moving on to public comments, do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor, we have two public comments.
All right, let's go ahead and take the first one.
Would you like to read the...
Oh, I have to read this thing, sorry, folks. We should just pre-record this, like, you know, an advertisement and then play it back at double speed, something to think about for the future.
A second.
Yeah, all right, so I'll do it as quickly as I can. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with city clerk prior to city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. First speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Mary Ann Good, to be followed by our last speaker,
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Mary Ann Good, and I'm a member of the Temecula Valley Women's Club. The Women's Club would like to invite the council members, staff, and the public to attend our murder mystery fundraising event. The event will be held here at the Civic Center on Saturday, September 8th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The cost is $100 per ticket for the champagne, dinner, and a murder mystery to solve. You'll also get to meet members of our Women's Club and their husbands, as well as other charitable organizations in the community. For several years, our fundraising events have allowed us to donate over $3 million to local nonprofit organizations such as Animal Friends of the Valley, Michelle's Place, Rancho Damocedas, Coinania, Oak Grove, Safe Alternatives, and the Temecula and Marietta Libraries. We have also provided over 20,000 a year in college scholarships for Temecula and Marietta public high school seniors. We also support local projects around the community, such as Temecula Fallen Heroes Memorial Project at the Duck Pond. We provide a lot of local support, so we hope to see you at our fundraiser event. To purchase tickets, please see our flyer. You can also go to our website at www.tvwc.com, but the tickets must be purchased by the end of the month. The cutoff for buying the tickets is August 31st. I think you might have a flyer, I don't know if you've all got the flyer. Yes. One of our beauty pageant contestants will get murdered, and we have to figure out who did it. We need your help. Prizes will be awarded, and lots of gift certificates, baskets will be available to bid. We also have a real-life beauty pageant winner. Ms. Morgan Lawrence will be present. She won the USA National Miss California for 2018. So it'll be a lot of fun, and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker is Rhonda Ranki.
Rhonda, good evening. Looks like you've got some folks joining you up there.
Someone's following me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Ron, all the council members, everyone that's up here this evening. I have with me one of our board directors, this is Laura Jolly, and I also have with me an intern for Rosekin Foundation and Emancipated Foster Youth, Maria. And we are here this evening for one reason, and one reason only, and that is to say thank you to each and every one of you for your support over the past five years. We just celebrated five years of serving local foster children and emancipated foster youth in our area, and we have served over 600 children.
Wow.
Yeah. We would not have been able to serve the children that we have served without your support, the support of the city. We've had the support of the police department and the fire departments and the community as well. And so we're just here to thank everyone, because there's so many to thank, I figured what better place to do it than right here. So thank you, and thank you for five years, and we're going to be here for many more, so we appreciate your continued support.
Thank you.
Rhonda, thank you so much. Amazing the work you guys do in our community, can't thank you enough. All right, so moving on, we have city council reports. We have Mr. Stewart.
Yes, well, we put a new crosswalk in, in front of Great Oak, and it has these flashing lights, so they don't have to walk all the way down to Pachanga Parkway to cross over to get to the parking lot, literally right across the street. And I actually went through and I experienced the slight delay that it took to allow the kids to go through. It worked perfectly. I thought it was a great move for the city to actually do that, and I just wanted to say thank you for everybody who was involved in putting that together.
All right, thank you. Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Temecula lost a longtime business owner and community member this past week, and I don't know if any of you know that Rose Thesing passed away, and she and Mike have been fixtures in Old Town for as long as I can remember at Rose's Cantina, so I was wondering if we could please adjourn in the memory of Rose Thesing.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. All right, looking at you, Kevin, are we doing Merchant Minute now or during your report? I can't recall.
Aaron?
I think we do council reports. Under yours?
Under yours.
Good, all right, well, there we go. All right, so if we could cue that up, please. We have some pretty amazing folks here in the audience joining us today. I had the opportunity several weeks ago to join them at their gym and look at some of the amazing things that are being done there. We do now a Merchant Minute where we highlight a quick, sort of commercial, if you will, highlighting some of the amazing things that are happening right here in our town, and I'm recognizing a number of faces out there as well, and I'm hoping you guys get a couple moments, if my colleagues wouldn't mind indulging me to get them a couple minutes at the microphone after, but if we could play the video, I'd appreciate that.
Hi, guys, my name's Amanda Gilland. I am the owner of West Coast Training Center down here in Temecula, California. Today, I wanted to talk about one of our amazing programs that we offer down here called Rocksteady Boxing. This program is designed to help people diagnosed with Parkinson's disease fight back against their disease. The reason I personally started this program was my father was diagnosed with this disease about four years ago. Rocksteady Boxing was designed to help Parkinson's fight back against the disease. The whole idea is when you think about boxing, you think about hand-eye coordination, motor skills, footwork, handwork, lots of brain signals. So the whole idea behind it is that the boxing itself can help increase the dopamine and increase their performance based on their motor skills. I'd love to invite you all down to come check out our gym. You can find us at our Facebook page, West Coast Training Center. We also have an Instagram page, West Coast Training Center. You can also stop by anytime, email me, or give me a call.
Amanda, if you wouldn't mind joining us at the microphone, I know you have a couple of quick words to say. I know a lot of your members are in the audience, it's good to see you all again.
Well, first off, thank you all for having us tonight, and for you, Mayor, taking the time out of your week to come down and show your support to us. We're just that little baby gym back in the corner, and nobody knows about us yet, but it means a lot to us, and of course, all these incredible people who fight so hard every day to have the acknowledgement that you guys have been able to provide with this video. We are, this is just one tiny little business in our little business. We do a lot of different programs that we cater to all sorts of different people, that we are trying to help in every way we can. We kind of say that we're the facility where people might feel forgotten can go. We work with, you know, our Rocksteady, which are people diagnosed with Parkinson's. We also are lucky enough to work with our city and have a contracted class with our senior community. We have a couple of them here today, too, to support us, and those are our two businesses that mean the world to me and to our facility. Our next class that we're going to be moving forward on is going to be something called Veterans in Motion. This is going to be our next baby business. This is going to be the transition for veterans, that time where they're getting out and it's a little confusing for them. So we have a couple veterans that are all going to be donating their time to come help us grow this as well with the city's support. So we do thank you all very much for having us out and supporting all of them. I do have a couple people, if that's okay with you all, that like to share their opinion on a couple of our programs. So we'll go with Frank first. Frank has been part of Rocksteady since day one. He was our very first athlete, and he's incredible, so here he is.
Yes, they call us athletes, so here we are. I'm a senior athlete, '76, so, yeah, I've been diagnosed with Parkinson's for almost five years. Before, I went to Rocksteady two years ago. I had a lot of problems with balance, strength, duresness, nervous now, but...
Me, too.
I'm, you know, in the last two years, I have seen improvements, especially my balance, and I really encourage people to go, everybody that I know that has Parkinson's, I try to encourage them to go. They're a great team, they have a wonderful organization, there's no dead time, every class is different. You can tell that they put a lot of time into planning each day when we get there. There's nobody sitting around waiting for the next thing to happen, it's all planned out, so it's very efficient, there's a lot of love in the room, you can tell that, everybody tries to take care of each other, and we have a good time. I personally travel almost 20 miles each way from Fallbrook to come to the class. I have four, sometimes five, other people from Fallbrook to go with me, so...
He's our transportation, or half our class.
I'm the taxi driver for Fallbrook, so that shows you right there that there's something very worthwhile, what she's doing, so I hope you'll help her. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's only two more people, I swear. Second person is Lisa. This is actually a wife of one of our Rocksteady Boxings. I like to give the opinion of the caregiver, also the wife, so they can also share their journey in this.
And I just wrote a little something, because I can't think off the cuff, so I just wanted to say good evening. My name is Lisa Happ, and I've been resident of Temecula for 27 years. My husband, John, was diagnosed with Parkinson's about three years ago. When he was diagnosed, the doctors told us that he needs to keep exercising and handed him a pamphlet for Rocksteady Boxing. At that time, the closest group was in San Diego, so of course, John was still working, and it wasn't possible for him to do that. Depression started to set in for both John and I, and we started to see some progression of the disease, so I got online looking for support groups, and what popped up was Rocksteady Boxing. So I looked it up again, and this time, there was a location in Temecula. So I made the phone call to Amanda to get John registered, and she not only listened to my story, but I got to hear how passionate she was and why. John's been with Rocksteady Boxing close to two years now, and it has been a life changer for both of us. With it being in Temecula, he's able to drive on his own. It's a place that he can go to work out and feel comfortable with a staff that has been trained to work with the disease. It's become a great support system for him, but for me as well, because I can also reach out to other spouses. We have seen changes with his balance, with his gait, and even though the disease still continues to progress. Amanda, Stefan, and the rest of their staff, all of which are volunteers, have worked hard at building this program, and it has grown to more than double in the size since we started. People from Temecula, Marietta, Wildemar, Fallbrook, and other surrounding cities come to Temecula to get help in slowing down the progression of their Parkinson's. To my amazement, when I post a picture of John doing his workout, I put a hashtag, Rocksteady Boxing Temecula, and have had multiple people reach out to me wanting information about the program, because they also have a loved one dealing with it. We seem to have only scratched the surface of the disease, but with the help of our city of Temecula, we can reach out to more families that are also in need of Rocksteady Boxing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more speaker, her name is Vicki. Come on up, Vicki. She's a part of our regular senior class, she's the most consistent athlete that we have, and she's awesome.
Hi, Mary Ann, hi Jeff. I didn't really ever think that I would be here touting the Senior Citizens Fitness Center, because I just never thought that I would get to be that old. Or if I was not going to be that old, I wasn't going to act that old. However, things change, and I just made a couple of notes, some of you know, and we moved here in '89, my husband and I, and two years ago, last month, he passed away, but he was buried on his 95th birthday. And if I could be as active at 95 as he was, sorry, I wouldn't need you, but...
Hey, that's okay.
But I'm not, and so I do it, I really appreciate it. In fact, my cardiologist asked me, he said, "Well, are you walking?" I said, "Not only am I not walking," I said, "I don't have the strength, I don't have the energy, and I really don't have the interest." And he said, "Well, you need to do something," and I said, "I'm doing it, just getting around." Well, the thing is, I had my knees replaced after my husband passed away. I was blessed to get a call from my brother, who just had to have a, well, he had a stroke, and then he had a valve replacement, and I said, "Well, I've got a vacancy, if you want to come and move down here," because he couldn't live by himself. All right, where this fits in is he cannot walk without a walker. He really isn't able to do any of these things, and I saw a little ad for their, for the gym. Now, moving back to when we first moved here, this gym and this group is the perfect fit for Temecula. I moved here because Temecula had the greatest sense of community. I mean, it was in all the papers in '89, but I did know that that was probably put out by the PR department of the developers, so that didn't kid me. But I, yeah, well, then, I'm looking at Jeff. However, we did park out at Lake Skinner, and we checked around, and I told my husband, I said, "You know what, I'm getting the feeling that everything they say is true. People are real, people are warm, and I have been just the biggest fan of Temecula ever since." I mean, I was in the first major walk fundraiser, the pumpkin run that we did for the community center, and I think that was in '90 or whatever. But, no, the thing is, when I say it is a perfect fit, is this is such a caring community. I can only hope that their senior group will grow to be as large as their Parkinson group, because they give such personal attention, and they make it fun. I mean, I'm telling you, my brother can hardly wait, and especially when they let him put on the boxing gloves, and, yeah, we don't spar, but he thinks that this is fun. Yeah, he's over there now. Seriously, though, it's one of these things, if you don't use it, you lose it, well, that's the truth, and in the short time I have been going, I have noticed a major difference just in the upper body strength, and so I look forward to it. So the thing is, they really do need as much support, as much, support isn't the only word, I'm brain-dead, seniors do that. But as much... Okay, we'll settle for support, okay. Anyway, as far as the community is concerned, we don't need another fitness center, but we definitely need this fitness center.
Thank you. That's great. So ultimately, my goal with my facility is to give back to the community in any way I can. If you guys can think of anything that you could utilize my facility for, I'd love to be of service to all of you as well, as you can see how much fun we have every day with these incredible people, and again, we appreciate you having us out tonight. And thank you, Mayor, for everything.
Absolutely. All right, thank you so much, and... We look forward to seeing all sorts of great things from you guys. All right, let's see, notice to the public, we are going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve action minutes of July 24th, 2018. Three, approve list of demands. Four, authorize emergency radio rental maintenance and repair for Temecula Police Motorcycle Fleet Services for fiscal year 2018-19 with the County Riverside Information Technology Division. Number five, grant easement to Eastern Municipal Water District for installation of a sewer main within city property located at Mission Village Apartments at the southwest corner of Pujo Street and Sixth Street. Item number six, approve an agreement for consultant services with MDG Associates, Inc. for the provision of community development block grant CDBG administration services. Seven, approve the First Amendment to the annual agreement for minor maintenance services with Renee B. Martinez, Sr., DBA Renee's Commercial Management for Weed Abatement Maintenance Services for fiscal year 1819. Number eight, approve recycled water agreements with Rancho California Water District for Interstate 15, State Route 79 through Interchange Project PW 04-08. And finally, number nine, reject all bids for sidewalks, Old Town Boardwalk Enhancement, PW 17-16, and authorize the project to be rebid.
Move the consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Let the record show that Mr. Comaturo's lost his screen.
I have a strange screen.
I can make the motion for you. How's that?
And I vote aye.
Oh, and there it is.
We're good.
And that passes 4 to 0 with Mr. Nigara absent. All right, we're going to go and move on to Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigara is absent. Director Ron?
Here.
Director Stewart?
Here.
President Comaturo?
I'm here. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have two items under consent. Item 10, approve the action minutes of July 24th. And item 11, approve the First Amendment to the annual agreement for minor maintenance services with Renee B. Martinez, Sr., DBA Renee's Commercial Management for homeless encampment cleanup services for fiscal year 2018-19.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, let's cast our votes.
Motion carries 4 to 0 with Mr. Nigara absent. Mr. Hawkins, what have you got for us today?
Well, Mr. President, I'm actually still kind of, still in awe with the previous presentation. I thought that was incredible, and I'm glad we can play a small part. But just a quick reminder, as there's always some spirited competition amongst our community services commissioners, so this Friday from 6:30 to 9 o'clock p.m. is the eighth annual Build Your Own Boat Regatta, I know, at the CRC pool. The sold-out, family-friendly event is sure to produce some high-seas fun and bragging rights for the entire year, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Adams, the general manager's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Any board member reports?
I just want to tag onto what Kevin just said, that is one of the coolest events to go to. Even if you're not in it, it's so fun to watch, because they put so much time and dedication into the thought process of creating a boat that sinks almost entirely as fast as they make it, so it's a lot of fun to watch. So if you're not doing anything on a Friday night, you should come and check it out, it is a lot of fun, yes.
And why wouldn't you build a boat?
I'm not going to sink.
Okay, thank you for those comments. With that and no further comments, we'll accept the motion to adjourn to the next meeting of August 28th.
They're moved.
Motion and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? We stand adjourned.
All right, and we're going to move on to opening the Temecula Public Financing Authority meeting. Can we have the roll call, please?
Director Comaturo?
Here.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigara is absent. Director Stewart?
Here.
Chair Ron?
I'm still here. All right, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, moving on then to the consent calendar. Again, all matters listed on consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. No discussion of these items will occur unless members of the Temecula Public Financing Authority request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 12, approve action minutes of July 24th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. And that passes four to zero. All right, and, uh, let's see, we're going to convene a joint meeting of the city council and Temecula Public Financing Authority, and, uh, item number thirteen is to approve the implementation agreement with Western Riverside Council of Governments, or W R C O G, for the retrofit, maintenance, and repair of streetlights acquired from Southern California Edison, and authorize city manager to execute related documents. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'll be giving the staff report for item number thirteen regarding our implementation agreement with W R C O G, followed by, uh, the next two items regarding the financing of our streetlight program that'll be given by our finance director, Jennifer Hennessy. Just a little background about our, uh, streetlight program. Uh, this program started in, uh, two thousand and twelve, when Southern California Edison first announced that they would make the acquisition of streetlights within jurisdictions in their service area available for, uh, purchase or acquisition by the city. Uh, like, and that was in two thousand and twelve, and, uh, under the watchful eye of Mr. Butler, the city decided to pursue that program, uh, for some very good reasons, which you will see in just a few minutes. In December of two thousand and fourteen, W R C O G formed a regional streetlight program to assist the cities or jurisdictions within their membership in this acquisition process from Southern California Edison. Currently, uh, Southern California Edison owns approximately seventy-four-hundred-and-fifty-three streetlights in Temecula, and seventy-three-hundred-and-fifty-four, or just, uh, just about a hundred shy of the total number of lights in Temecula are eligible for purchase by the city. The only ones that are not eligible for purchase are those that are lights that are mounted on wood poles, which are holding up the electric lines, or on steel poles, which Edison will retain ownership of. The purchase price of the streetlight system in the city that was established by a valuation prepared by Southern California Edison is five million, three-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, four-hundred-and-nine dollars. However, this may change, uh, slightly, depending upon the final inventory of lights that will be conducted by Edison here within the next few months. In June of two thousand and seventeen, the city entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Southern California Edison for the acquisition of those streetlights. That agreement was then submitted to the California Public Utilities Commission, which was approved here recently by the commission on June twenty-first of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, and just to give you a reason why we're pursuing this acquisition of the streetlights here in, in the city, uh, currently, the, uh, our charge for those streetlights, uh, being owned by Southern California Edison, is our largest utility charge of any of our, our accounts in the city. We currently pay, uh, one million, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars a year for our streetlights. Um, if we acquire these from Southern California Edison, which we're recommending here to you this evening, we anticipate saving about seven-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars a year. So our bill will drop from one million, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand to just over four-hundred-thousand dollars a year. And here's how that'll happen. As you can see on the left-hand side of this slide, currently, we pay Edison thirteen dollars and thirty cents a month per pole for those lights being owned by Edison as their assets, and that includes a facility charge, as well as the electric energy charge that they, that they apply for lights that they own. Uh, if a, a light is taken over by a city, a jurisdiction, it moves from what they call the L S one rate schedule to the L S two rate schedule, or the customer-owned rate schedule. Under that schedule, the monthly rate drops to five dollars and fifteen cents a month. So, that's where we, uh, will achieve that, uh, over seven-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year savings by taking over ownership of the lights. So W R C O G's, uh, involvement in the program, uh, it was to set up basically this program for the member agencies within its, its, uh, membership area. Uh, one of those, uh, programs that they, uh, put together initially was a financing program, in order to be able to finance the cost of the acquisition, as well as the conversion or retrofit of all the lights to LED. They arranged that financing through Bank of America. They actually did a competitive solicitation for other, uh, financial institutions to provide that financing, and selected Bank of America. The total acquisition and retrofit cost for our lights in Temecula is about seven million dollars. Uh, the interest rate that was, uh, proposed for that financing through Bank of America was five-point-seven-five percent. It was a taxable financing, and the reason it's a taxable financing is we have an opportunity, once we take ownership of these lights, to potentially generate revenue using this asset. And we've actually had conversations with a couple of the, the wireless carriers about installing, uh, what they call small cell antennas on the streetlight poles, and, and we would get revenue by, uh, leasing that infrastructure to the cell company. So we're, we are in discussions with the wireless carriers on that, and so we do anticipate being able to generate some revenue from this, this asset going forward here. The term of that financing was fifteen years. It involved a lease-purchase agreement with Bank of America, which required that the bank would be, uh, required to approve any modifications to the, uh, the, the light system itself. Uh, staff evaluated that, uh, financing program and, uh, decided to look for some other potential better opportunities or better ways to finance this acquisition, potentially at a, at a lower cost. We looked at a couple of different alternative, uh, financing, uh, opportunities, uh, including both the financing of the acquisition, as well as the ongoing operations and maintenance. And what we eventually landed on, and this will be presented to you in the next report here by, uh, Jennifer, is to actually pay with city funds to do the acquisition and retrofit of the lights, and then we will finance our Margarita Recreation Center project, uh, through a Compass Bank financing, which you'll hear from Jennifer in a few minutes. That involves a much lower interest rate, about the same term, and it would be a tax-exempt financing, so we would be able to basically do this financing, financing at a lower cost, and with no, kind of no strings attached. The Bank of America financing had some additional requirements, being that, uh, the bank actually would be technically the owner of the asset during the term of the financing. So we've decided to move away from that financing program, and you'll hear about that in just a minute. So the implementation, uh, agreement with W R C O G includes, uh, the services involved in the retrofit of the lights to the LED lamps, and I've got actually a, a prop here to show you. It's a sample of the, the type of LED light that we will be installing here in the city. So it involves the retrofitting of the lights, supplying the LED lights, and it also involves the ongoing operation and maintenance of the streetlight systems once we take ownership. So once we take ownership from Edison, we will be responsible for the ongoing operation and maintenance of those lights. W R C O G issued an R F P for that, uh, retrofit and maintenance and operation service, and selected Seaman, Seaman Industries to provide that service, and we'll be contracting with W R C O G for that service provided by Seaman Industries. I also should, should note that Tyler Masters from W R C O G is here in the audience. Tyler was, uh, actively involved in putting this program together since the inception, so this is kind of one of his babies, I think, here, and he's, he's finally seeing, uh, the fruits of his labor here, as the, the member agencies go forward with this acquisition. And again, as I mentioned, this is the, uh, the light fixture that's been selected through a competitive solicitation process, um, which W R C O G administered. Uh, you may have attended a demonstration of numerous different types of LED lights in Hemet, and seen several of, of the types of lights installed. This was one of those fixtures, and this is the one that was selected and that we'll be, uh, installing here in Temecula. The lights will be supplied by California Electric Supply through that contract with W R C O G. It's a G E Evolve Light Fixer. It's a very reliable fixture. Uh, it, it includes a, uh, I believe it's a fifteen-year warranty, so the, the LED lights are much more reliable, have a longer-term lifespan than the, the low-pressure sodium lights that we have, uh, up right now. So, in addition to that cost savings, the lower cost from Southern California Edison, these lights will actually last much longer and have a much lower ongoing operation and maintenance cost. This is just a picture of, uh, some of these, uh, the LED Evolve Light Series, and this is the actual, uh, installation here. This device right here that goes on the top of the light, it's a, it's a photo cell with the standard, uh, application that turns the light on basically when it's dark and, and off when it gets light. We're also looking at another program to actually implement a control node that we would, uh, substitute in place of this photo cell that would give us access to each of the individual lights, to be able to control the lights, turn them on and off, dim them if we, we chose to do that, and it would also send a, a signal to us if any of the lights were to go out for any reason.
Nice.
So our implementation agreement with W R C O G includes, again, that LED retrofit. Uh, the cost of that, uh, retrofit is about two-hundred-and-ten dollars per pole, which includes both the labor to do the retrofit, as well as the light fixture itself. Uh, since we have about seventy-five-hundred lights, we're looking at a total of a little over one-point-five million dollars for that retrofit. That'll be included in that, uh, overall financing cost that Jennifer will be explaining to you in just a minute. Uh, an additional cost was to reimburse W R C O G for some of their administrative costs that, uh, they've been involved with for the last four years in putting this program together. And then our ongoing operations and maintenance costs through the contract, uh, negotiated with Seaman's Industries, is at, uh, about seventy-six-thousand dollars a year. So our total cost going forward will be that four-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year annual cost to Edison, as well as the seventy-six-thousand-dollar-a-year cost for operations and maintenance.
That's a lot.
The, uh, environmental determination for this program was, uh, prepared and, um, filed by W R C O G. It was a, uh, and then a notice of exemption under Secu Section Fifty-three oh-one, Class One, Two, and Three, and that notice of exemption was filed, uh, by W R C O G. The project does have the support of the Palomar Observatory, because the temperature of the lights that's being used is something that they will be able to, uh, filter in their, uh, facilities up at, uh, Palomar Mountain. So they are in support of the, uh, program to retrofit the lights to LED. So again, the fiscal impact of this program, and this will be explained by Jennifer, but, uh, we are, we are anticipating using, uh, existing city funds to pay for the cost of both the acquisition and the retrofit to LED, and that'll be included in the C I P budget for this year. We anticipate a net savings of about seven-hundred-thousand dollars a year in the first year, and then every year going forward. Our annual maintenance cost will be seventy-six-thousand, uh, dollars that, uh, will be in addition to the four-hundred-thousand that we pay Southern California Edison on an annual basis. And then the, uh, the, the additional annual savings, the, uh, remainder of that seven-hundred-thousand dollars a year savings, will be used to offset the, uh, the financing that we then will go forward with on the M R C project, and again, that'll be explained to you by Jennifer. So that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wow, that's really good.
All right, I don't see any questions. If we could, uh, have Ms. Hennessy's report, then?
We do have a, uh, action for you to take on this item. It's our implementation agreement with W R C O G.
Okay, so, no questions. I have a couple, uh, quick comments on this, though. One, one was, you know, this is, uh, not just a good cost savings measure. I know you guys have been working on this for a year. Appreciate W R C O G's work, uh, and their partnership with Edison to help bring this forward. So again, thank you so much for setting that up, the demonstration sites, the tours, you know, helping us understand the value of all this. One of the things that wasn't mentioned, though, that I think is an important note, is, is the, the value here to public safety. So, you know, those, uh, sodium lights that we have out there give that nice orange sort of yellow glow to everything, and washout color, and, and, uh, you know, I got to say, when I first moved to California, uh, about twenty years ago, I went to the grocery store late at night and walked outside to go to my car, and I was just stunned, uh, thinking, well, I came from Nevada, so everything was pretty well lit up there, if you're familiar. But, you know, it was a big change for me, and it felt, uh, remarkably unsafe, um, and, uh, and poorly lit. Uh, and the other thing is, a lot of the colors, uh, tend to wash out, and so from a public safety perspective, there's a value in, in doing what we're doing, and especially because these lights provide full spectrum. Um, your blue car still looks blue, and while, you know, that may not seem that important from a law enforcement perspective, it certainly is, um, especially when they're trying to track down criminals and have, you know, reports from folks from incidents that occur at night. Um, so there's a lot of, I think, and, uh, you know, additional values, uh, to, to this program. Um, one thing, if, if Pat didn't just indulge me here, again, my, my colleagues here, but, uh, one thing, question I had was on the, uh, uh, customer-owned rate schedule. Do we have the option at that point of then switching to a time-of-use plan? Is that...
No, that, that's not an op, an option under the, uh, street lighting, because these lights are all un-metered, so it's just a flat rate, is what their, their rate schedule allows for. Uh, the, there, there is some discussion, though, about, um, this, uh, the, the, the control module that, um, we're looking at implementing on the lights, actually does include a micrometer, and so it, it does have the capability of metering the amount of electricity that the light is actually using. Now, the utilities have not quite bought into, uh, accepting the, uh, the metering from the micrometers on these, uh, these, uh, control modules, so the only option available to us at this time is the un-metered L S two rate, which is the, the five dollars and fifteen cents a month.
Okay, it might, I mean, it might be worth, you know, reaching out to Edison and see if we can't get past that hurdle, um, because that certainly would be, uh, a, a big incentive for us, uh, maybe not necessarily on their end, but certainly on our end, to adjust the pricing. Um, and then, the other one was, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, the, the amount of the cost savings, and this program eventually starts to pay for itself, and we see these savings into the future, and I'm wondering, Aaron, if, uh, maybe you and Greg and Pat can kind of get together with folks and, and see if there's a way of, you know, projecting out Ms. Hennessy, too, uh, looking at those funds and what those savings would be into the future, and maybe, uh, setting aside a portion of those funds for, you know, sort of an investment account, uh, specific to energy efficiency and, you know, energy demand reduction programs for the city, so that we're not just, you know, the funds just don't disappear in the general budget, but actually get rolled back into other cost-saving programs.
We can, we can absolutely look at that. The next two agenda items, though, are going to probably show you what we intend to do with that savings, and so that savings, in a nutshell, is actually going to cover the debt service on the financing for the new community center and the new pool. So, we're using the savings from the streetlights to pay for the debt service for the financing, so...
Right.
We'll, we'll walk you through it.
But into the, but I'm, I'm, I'm thinking beyond that.
Beyond the term of that loan.
Like into the future.
Absolutely.
Beyond the term of that loan, you know, it might be nice to have that in the future, because that, as technology shifts, you know, we'll want to be able to stay nimble in the city and have a dedicated fund, if we could create that, to, uh, invest in those kind of programs, so...
Yeah, absolutely, and I believe we have a, a dedicated account for that, too.
All right. All right, so I'm going to need a motion on, uh...
Oh, move.
Second.
Let's see, item number thirteen. I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. All right, and that also passes four to zero with Mr. Nigar absent. All right, moving on to, uh, item number fourteen, and, uh, yeah, let's just start with fourteen. Ms. Hennessy?
Okay, good evening. So the item before you tonight is the consideration of an alternative fin, funding mechanism for the reconstruction of the Margarita Rec Center and Pool Facility. The Margarita Rec Center, or M R C, was originally approved in the Capital Improvement Program with eight-point-one million in funding, primarily from Measure S, with the building to be constructed over the next two, two years. Due to funding constraints, the construction of the pool facility was deferred until twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. In reviewing alternative funding sources, staff consulted with the city's financing team, including financial advisor Jim Fabian with Fieldman Roulette, and legal counsel Brian Quint with Quinton Timming. The team recommends a lease financing arrangement to generate proceeds to complete both the M R C and the pool facility in a timelier manner, and free up Measure S funds in order to purchase the streetlights from SoCal Edison, as previously discussed. And the potential savings from owning the streetlights and LED conversion adequately covers the cost of the debt service on the lease financing. The M R C financing structure is similar to the existing financing arrangement the city has on its civic center. The new financing would also be secured by the civic center, and would generate approximately six-point-four million dollars in net proceeds dedicated to the M R C project. The financing offered by Compass Bank is at a rate of three-point-four-two percent over fifteen years, and the annual debt service is roughly five-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand to be paid by the general fund. While in discussions with Compass Bank, the team also asked if they would lower the interest rate on our existing civic center lease, and they agreed. The current rate on the lease, on the civic center lease is three-point-seven-five percent, and they agreed to lower it to the three-point-four-two percent while keeping the same maturity date of December first, twenty-thirty-one. The reduced rate will generate approximately thirty-one-thousand dollars per year in lower debt service payments, creating over four-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars in savings over the remaining term of the lease. This agenda item includes the city and the Temecula Public Financing Authority, or T P F A, resolutions authorizing the new M R C lease, and then refi, and the refinancing of the civic center lease. Additionally, the financing documents necessary to execute the M R C lease and amend the civic center lease agreement are included in the agenda packet. As noted earlier, by utilizing lease financing for the M R C capital project, the city will not only be able to complete the project in a timelier manner, it will also make available adequate Measure S funds to acquire the city, citywide streetlights, which will generate sufficient savings to offset the debt service for the M R C lease. Staff recommends the council and T P F A adopt the resolutions authorizing the financing of the M R C, and adopt the resolutions approving the amendment. of the MRC and adopt the resolutions approving the amendment to the current lease agreement for the civic center. This concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions, as well as the city's financial advisor, Jim Fabian, is in the audience with us tonight for any technical questions. Thank you.
All right, do we have any questions? Mr. Comatero.
Yeah, Jennifer, and maybe I missed it, but did we do an analysis of what the savings would be on the civic center lease from 3.75 to 3.42 over the 15-year lease? What does that look like?
Yeah, the remaining, for the remaining term of the lease, it's over $420,000.
Thank you.
I have, I just have a comment if we don't have any further questions.
Oh, go ahead.
This is a perfect example of what the city does to try and accomplish goals for our Quality of Life Master Plan while saving money at the same time. So we won't be looking at any additional cost to the city, and yet we will have generated a savings through the purchase of these lights, which will be used for the greater benefit of the whole community. So, great job. Great job, everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the refinancing package and bundling this was just an amazing job by you guys to figure all this out and put it together. Really outstanding.
And asking for a reduced interest rate. I mean, something, you know, simple as that. I bet a lot of cities don't do that.
You know, it reminds me of what we did for the Old Town Community Theater. We refinanced what in those days were redevelopment bonds, freed up, was it about $10 or $11 or $12 million, something like that, to pay the cost of the theater. And just by kind of a stroke of genius of our staff, we kind of got the theater for free. So it's neat and very similar here. Good work.
All right, well, take a motion on item number 14.
I move resolutions 14.1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
Okay, and that also passes 4-0 with Mr. Nigar absent. All right, and then moving on to item number 15, approved amendments to fiscal year 18, '19 annual operating budget and fiscal year 19, '23 capital improvement program budget. Staff report, please.
Me again. Okay, this agenda item relates to the prior two presentations on the streetlight acquisition and the MRC capital projects, and includes the corresponding budgetary adjustments to the annual operating budget and the capital improvement program. The current CIP, which was adopted by the council on June 12th, approved $7.8 million in funding for the citywide streetlight acquisition and LED retrofit project. The original recommendation, as Pat alluded to earlier, was to finance the acquisition of the streetlights through Bank of America. Under this financing scenario, the city's debt service costs were approximately $558,000 per year. The current CIP also included 8.1 million in funding for the MRC project, utilizing Measure S and development impact fee funds. The budgetary adjustments to reflect the recommended change to the streetlight acquisition project is illustrated on this slide, and the top section reflects the current CIP, and the bottom section reflects the adjusted CIP. The recommended budget adjustment replaces 5.3 million in capital financing with 5.1 million in Measure S funds, plus an additional $400,000 from a source yet to be identified. To fit within the available cash flow, the project is also being spread over a two-year period. Possible sources of the $400,000 to be identified could be the revenue generated by the leasing of the streetlight poles to cellular companies, which Pat discussed earlier, or available year-end surplus from the Measure S fund. The budgetary adjustment for the MRC project is shown here on this slide, and staff recommends reducing the amount of Measure S funding from 7.9 million down to 2.1 million and utilizing capital financing to replace Measure S. The 6.4 million in capital financing funds would be generated from the lease financing arrangement discussed in my previous presentation. Additionally, the funding for the pool renovation would be accelerated to the current fiscal year, so that the entire MRC project can be designed and constructed as a single capital project. The adopted budget reflects a transfer of funds from the general fund to pay the debt service on both the streetlight financing and the civic center financing lease. The payments are labeled as operating transfers from the general fund to the financing funds. The net impact of the adjustment related to the capital project financing shows a $49,000 increase in debt service in the current year, with slightly reduced debt service in the years to follow. Additionally, with Compass Bank agreeing to lower the interest rate on the civic center, the adjustment and adjustment is included to reflect the lower payments, which nearly offsets the $49,000 increase related to the capital project financing fund. Staff recommends that the city council approve the amended CIP budgets for the streetlight acquisition and the MRC capital projects, as well as appropriate $731,850 in available Measure S funds to supplement the MRC project. That concludes my presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Nope.
All right, no questions. And...
Approval.
Second.
Move approval, motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Nice. And again, 4-0 passing with Mr. Nigar absent. All right, we're going to close the, I feel like we need to cut a cake or something or something. This is pretty exciting. I mean, come on, folks. This was, this was exciting. We went from retrofit maintenance of street lighting programs to lease financing documents to budget adjustments with the CIP. Whoa, hold on, because we still have, wait, we still have weed abatement and cannabis. So, I mean, we're rounding out the evening here.
What a night.
All right, so we're gonna reconvene Temecula City Council meeting.
I'm just bored.
And, and we're gonna move right on to, oh, adopt weed abatement's lien resolution for fiscal year 2017-18. Do we have a report on that?
We do.
All right.
And I promise this won't be the most exciting presentation of the night.
Aw, come on.
During the spring of each year, code enforcement embarks on a weed abatement process to address properties with excessive hazardous weeds. On June 12, 2018, the city council approved an agreement with Inland Empire Property Services to bring parcels with hazardous conditions into compliance with the Temecula Municipal Code. The owners of these parcels are billed by the city to recover the costs of the contractor plus a small administrative fee. If the owners do not respond to the billing request, the city places a lien on the property to recover the costs of the abatement. All affected owners were notified via certified mail of the need to abate weed conditions on their properties. They were given 30 days to remove the weeds themselves prior to city taking action and forced weed abatement action. As per the Temecula Municipal Code, Section 8.16.090, the lien process requires that a public hearing be held before the city council take any action and take comments from the property owners with respect to the cost proposed to be assessed against their properties and to confirm those costs. Forty-one properties have proposed liens before you tonight, and following the public hearing, the city council must adopt a resolution which, one, confirms the costs incurred by the city in performing the weed abatement work, and, two, provides that the, provides that the actual abatement costs be identified. Staff is then recommending that the city council adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the City Council, the City of Temecula, ordering confirmation of the special assessments against parcels of land within the city of Temecula for cost of abatement and removal of hazardous vegetation for fiscal year 2017-18." That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Okay. No questions for anyone?
Nope.
All right, looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, if we can go ahead and open the public hearing, note that there are no public comments, and then close the public hearing.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I'm just gonna skip right over that part. Randy, keeping me on task. All right, and that's probably what Peter was getting ready to yell at me for, so, all right, we're under control now. Take a motion in a second.
I'll motion.
All right. And let's cast our votes. And that, no surprises, passes 4-0. All right, moving on to city council business, we're moving on from weed to other weed. Receive presentation regarding cannabis-related research and findings with the concurrence of the Cannabis Ad Hoc Subcommittee, which is myself and Mr. Nigar. Good evening.
That was just bad. It was just bad.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me get the presentation set up here. So, some people might be wondering why we're here tonight, and since we've had several ordinances in the past dealing with, with commercial cannabis within the city. The reason is because on May 8, 2018, following the presentation of the cannabis community polling results by FM3, the city council directed staff to research four main items. First one is dealing with testing laboratories and whether or not they should be allowed within the city, and if so, what type of regulations should be in place for those testing laboratories. The second item was the delivery of cannabis and how to enforce delivery and what type of regulations should be in place for that as well. Third item was regarding personal outdoor growth or medical cannabis. We, for staff to review the current city regulations and see if there's any way to, or any need to amend those. And then the fourth item dealt with enforcement of cannabis activities and what additional tools the city could use in order to enforce illicit activities. On June 26, the staff met with the Cannabis Ad Hoc Subcommittee and discussed the items above. And so this presentation tonight is a summary of staff's research and the subcommittee's Just a brief background on the community poll results from FM3. The polling was done from April 7, 2018, to April 12, 2018, and 1,037 residents were interviewed. There were two main findings that came out of this polling. The community generally supports the existing prohibition of all commercial cannabis activities within the city, the current ordinances that city has adopted, and the community generally supports patients' access to medical cannabis. Some basic recap of some of the findings. 71% of those polled support access to cannabis to medical patients. 68% support lab testing for safety and quality control. 55% of those polled support the current ban on cannabis businesses within the city. 51% support transportation between cultivators, distributors, and manufacturers. 51% support growing cannabis for personal use indoors only, and that's under the current state law. And then 45% or less support the cultivation, manufacturing, or delivery of cannabis within the city. The council direction provided at the May 8 meeting was to continue with the current ordinance prohibiting commercial cannabis activities within the city, and then, again, directed staff to bring back information related to the potential city regulations for testing laboratories, as I mentioned earlier, as it relates to research and testing, the activities that are associated with them, as well as land use designation and security measures. In terms of delivery, it was the methods for regulating delivery and mobile distribution within the city. For personal outdoor grows of medical, for medical patients, the information regarding outdoor grows and related considerations. And then in terms of enforcement, any policies, procedures, or tools that could expedite the enforcement against any illicit operations within the city. Council also directed staff to, to hold public workshops for the purpose of educating the business and church community and general public regarding any city regulations that have been adopted or to be adopted after the completion of the research and meeting with the subcommittee. So as I mentioned, we met with the subcommittee on June 26, 2018, and the following is a summary of staff's research and the subcommittee's recommendations. Before I get into the specifics of those four items that we were directed to research, I wanted to provide just a basic, general overview of how the cannabis industry is to function in terms of, from cultivation to consumption, or from seed to sale, if you will. A commercial cultivator would cultivate cannabis, and when they harvest a crop, they then establish, or they create what are batches. Those batches are picked up by a distributor, who then can distribute those batches to a manufacturer to produce a product, whether that is a oil tincture, edible, or whatever other type of cannabis product that they manufacture. That manufacturer has to then contact the distributor again, who then takes that to a testing laboratory to test that product to make sure it's in conformance with state law. If it's just the flower that's being sold, the distributor would contact a testing laboratory to let them know that a batch is ready for testing. Laboratory comes, picks up samples of that, tests it, and then notifies the distributor that the product is ready for sale. Retailers contact the distributor, requesting the particular type of product they're looking for, and then they can sell that to the consumer. So the staff's research findings in terms of testing laboratories is that they do not perform research and development activities, and they do not manufacture or produce cannabis They only perform testing of cannabis products and cannabis for various levels of pesticides, solvents, impurities, cannabinoids, et cetera, to ensure that the product meets the criteria established by law and is safe for consumption. They may not obtain any other type of cannabis license, such as manufacturing, cultivation, or retail. Testing labs may test cannabis or cannabis products from a licensed distributor and cannabis from a qualified patient or caregiver, but they may not test cannabis from a person that's growing it recreationally in their home, as state law allows. Again, a distributor notifies a lab that a batch is ready, an employee of a laboratory would come pull samples of that batch and, from the distributor, for testing. The testing lab is required to hold those samples for 45 days after the test, and then are required to destroy those samples for state law. And then a testing lab is required to have a security plan by state law, which includes video cameras, the location of where the cannabis is to be stored on-site, and who has access to that cannabis, and then the tracking of the exchange from the distributor to the testing laboratory, the date, the time, the amount, and who actually took possession of that. The options discussed with the subcommittee include that the city could continue to prohibit testing laboratories in all zoning districts. City's current prohibition on all commercial cannabis activities includes testing laboratories. The city could limit testing laboratories to the light industrial and/or business park zoning districts, where such activities would generally be more compatible with surrounding uses. The city could also require a conditional use permit and could impose additional security requirements or other desired conditions as part of a required permit. Terms of delivery of cannabis, the current city regulations prohibit delivery of cannabis or cannabis products within the city. However, there is an exemption for qualified patients and primary caregivers of qualified patients to receive delivery of cannabis. Staff research finds that the state allows delivery as part of a retail operation with one of two retail licenses. The Type 9 license is a non-storefront license. It's delivery-only. In other words, a retailer must have a physical address, but the retailer may not sell cannabis through that retail, as a storefront. It must only sell it through a delivery service. The second type is a Type 10 license. This is for storefront that also allows for delivery. Retailer must also have a physical address for this, and... Retailer must also have a physical address for this and where the cannabis activities are conducted, they may sell cannabis to customers at the storefront or through a delivery service. State law also requires that delivery drivers have in their possession a copy of the legal retail license, an employee ID, government-issued ID, delivery inventory ledger that includes the time the driver leaves the retail store, the time the delivery is made, address of the delivery, and delivery quest receipts for all cannabis products carried by the driver. If no delivery is made within 30 minutes, the driver must return to the retail store. Deliveries also may only be made by an employee of that retailer. Deliveries must be made to a physical address and drivers may only, deliveries may only occur between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. The delivery vehicle may not contain more than $10,000 worth of cannabis product, and the delivery vehicle must be equipped with a GPS tracking device. The options discussed with the subcommittee include that the city could require a retailer to obtain a business license in order to deliver medical cannabis within the city. The city could require a retailer to obtain a permit, something similar to our taxi cab ordinance, which, in which they would pay a fee, register with the city, go through a background check, have specific insurance requirements, as well as the city could impose other conditions as desired as part of the required permit. It should be noted that since the subcommittee met, new proposed regulations have been released by the state, and particularly Regulation 5416 does not allow a city to prohibit delivery of cannabis within a city. In terms of the personal outdoor grows of medical cannabis, just to review the current city regulations, outdoor cultivation for medical cannabis or non-medical, for other purposes or other purposes, is prohibited everywhere within the city. There is however, a limited exemption from law enforcement for primary caregivers and qualified patients, where they may cultivate up to 12 cannabis plants per qualified patient with a maximum of two patients slash caregivers per resident, residents. It must be, cultivation must occur only on single-family detached dwellings. Outdoor cultivation areas must be fully enclosed and secured with an opaque six-foot fence. However, this requirement is not required on properties greater than five acres. Outdoor cultivation must be set back 10 feet from a property line, and the outdoor cultivation area must not be visible from the public right-of-way. Outdoor cultivation may not be on a premise located within 1,000 feet of a school, community center, or park. And then finally, cultivation, whether it's done indoors or outdoors, may not be on the same premise with childcare, church, or youth facility, and this is also consistent with state law for recreational cultivation indoors. The city added the limited exemption from enforcement for primary caregivers and qualified patients as a result of testimonials heard at public hearings. Those testimonials included comments about access to medical cannabis, patients' access to it, the quality of personal cultivation versus the quality of retail products, the cost of personal cultivation versus the cost of retail products. The options discussed with the subcommittee include that the city could continue with the current regulations, or the city could require medical cannabis cultivation indoors only. This would be in line with the state allowance for recreational cultivation. City could require a permit for outdoor cultivation of medical cannabis, where staff could verify that a qualified patient or caregiver is on site. They could verify the setbacks from the property lines, schools, parks, et cetera. And for consistency with current regulations, the city could require outdoor cultivation on properties greater than five acres to occur within an enclosed, secured area with six-foot fence. In terms of enforcement, the state has taken certain actions during this last year. They've sent out cease and desist letters to a prominent illegal delivery and dispensary website. They've also sent out cease and desist letters to over 500 illegal dispensaries, and they've indicated possible civil and criminal penalties for those. Terms of our code enforcement, we have our standard nuisance abatement process that the city follows. We issue a notice of violation. We then go through administrative citations and issue fines, and then go through the abatement process, which involves city attorney and mediator, if necessary. The code enforcement can also red-tag a building if they determine that there are serious life safety concerns citing building and safety code violations. What we heard from code enforcement and our police department was that we have not received any complaints for any outdoor cultivation of cannabis, nor have we received or had any traffic stops or complaints involving delivery of cannabis within the city. Our biggest problem is with illegal dispensaries. Other considerations, the state regulations and pending legislation. On June 24th, the cannabis, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Cannabis Control amended and re-adopted the emergency regulations for another 180 days. Then on July 13th, 2018, the state licensing agencies published proposed regulations and started the 45-day comment period. Many of the changes, many changes occurred to the current emergency regulations with those proposed regulations. And as I mentioned before, there is one particular regulation, 5416, which states, "A delivery employee may deliver to any jurisdiction within the state of California." Also, there are approximately 100 bills that have been introduced into the legislature that could change any of the city's regulations and which would then require the city to look at additional regulations or changes consistent with state regulations when they become effective. So, looking at the cannabis ad hoc subcommittee's recommendations, in regards to testing laboratories, the subcommittee recommended that we continue to prohibit commercial marijuana activities, including testing laboratories, primarily because they do not allow for research and development activities and are not likely to encourage development of medical and biotechnical industries within the city, and because there could be potential additional costs with enforcement activities regarding testing laboratories. Terms of delivery of cannabis, subcommittee suggested that we postpone changing the current regulations that we have until the state's final rule-making process is complete, simply because there's too many changes going on and too much uncertainty with the changing state regulations, and because the proposed state regulations are fairly robust and would allow the police department to quickly determine whether or not a driver is operating in compliance with state law. For personal outdoor grows, the subcommittee recommended amending the current ordinance to require cultivation of medical cannabis indoors. This would be in line with the state's regulation for recreational cannabis. However, they also suggested that we continue to allow the 12 plants per patient with a maximum of 24 plants. If the city council wishes to continue outdoor cultivation of medical cannabis, then they suggest we require a permit or registration with the city, and that any outdoor cultivation be fully enclosed within a six-foot opaque fence regardless of the property size. In terms of enforcement, again, the prominent illegal activity is the illegal dispensaries. In addition to the city's existing enforcement strategy, the city and staff should work with Southern California Edison about the possibility to shut down electrical services to any illegal operations. Terms of deliveries, the proposed state regulations appear to provide, at the time, appear to provide the tools necessary to enforce illegal delivery services. And then in terms of outdoor grows, the indoor cultivation or outdoor cultivation with a permit or registration would assist code enforcement with determining compliance with the city regulations. That concludes my staff report, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Stewart?
So, basically, the state law says we cannot stop deliveries even of recreational cannabis? Is that correct?
As the proposed regulations are written right now, that's correct.
Okay. So, does that give the city, though, the authority to hand out licenses or make them register with our city to deliver within our city?
As we understand the proposed regulations, we would be able to apply additional regulations on them. We just could not prohibit them.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Oops. All right. Let's see. Ms. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talked about registration when we approved, you know, grows for people with medical conditions who had an approved medical marijuana card. But then I think the topic turned to the fact that if we require people to register, that would then become a public record available to the public, and it might make those locations more susceptible to crime, you know, people who would want to come on the property and cultivate for themselves, didn't we not? Wasn't that a consideration?
I believe that was one of the considerations that the council talked about.
And so, that doesn't, you know, I would have concerns about that, number one, and that kind of removes that enforcement tool or that registration tool from our toolbox. But apart from making those public documents available to the public, I don't know what else we can do.
All right. Well, just a couple of quick things on my end. You know, you mentioned the distribution, mobile distribution piece. That's just a proposed regulation right now. It's still within the 45-day comment period. The Bureau of Cannabis Control is having its meeting on Monday in Sacramento, and that's an item that I had placed on our agenda. I was a little disappointed that that discussion had moved forward in its regulatory process in between meetings of the bureau and not giving us any notice to be able to respond. And so we're holding a special meeting in August to specifically address that. Now, I think our perspective and the perspective of many cities is that the state is overstepping its regulatory authority and allowing it through that process. If the state wants to pass legislation, which they attempted to and it failed, related to this mobile distribution and sort of free market across all local government, you know, that's one option that they have, and as a legislative authority, they may be able to accomplish that. But, you know, myself and many others firmly believe that this is definitely not under the bureau's regulatory authority, and so we'll be talking on Monday to address exactly And I understand that a number of cities, including ours, are providing letters along with efforts by the California League of Cities. So, you know, so I'm looking forward to a very robust discussion on Monday morning. The, you know, and along with that, one of the things that was mentioned, you mentioned that there's no code enforcement issues related to mobile distribution in the city. Well, that may be the case, but I've seen a number of issues, and I know our police chief sitting in the back there has too, of criminal activity related to mobile distribution because it's still a cash-only business. And while these folks are supposed to be kind of like pizza delivery trucks, you know, that you only carry what's being ordered, we all know and law enforcement knows that that is absolutely not the case, that they are basically just mobile storefronts carrying a significant amount of materials, violating state law, and also, again, operating under predominantly a cash-only business. And so they are targets for criminal activity. And so there are multiple layers of concern, I think, specific to mobile distribution. I would like to see the state of California take a step back from this position and do the right thing and either, you know, let local government preferably make their own decisions about what they want in their cities or counties. And if failing that, at least let it work its way through the legislative process the way it should. The, I appreciate the comments on the outdoor cultivation, and I think that's been sort of a conversation we've had back and forth for quite a while. I have the preference myself personally of seeing this move into a indoor-only type of ordinance, mostly because, you know, enforcement is next to impossible, and it opens up a lot of risk to, you know, the neighbors and to youth, just being able to have access to, you know, a product that they shouldn't, because frankly, it's just that much easier to get a hold of. And so I'd really appreciate us, you know, taking that into consideration and revising our current ordinance related to outdoor grows. And then, of course, you know, the laboratory stuff, we, I think, all had these expectations as the state was rolling out its regulations, what outdoor, or what, I'm sorry, what laboratory meant, and it turns out it's a very narrow definition. And, you know, I think that the potential market for something like this is fairly narrow in the city. The economic advantage to the city is fairly limited, but the risks are fairly substantial because we're not near, you know, any manufacturing or grows, and so they would be transporting this material long distances and through the city, and it just creates another set of issues for law enforcement and fire protection to be able to deal with adequately, and not having any of the potential tax revenue generated off the cannabis industry to help offset those additional costs in police or fire protection just doesn't seem like it's a wise, you know, choice for us to consider at this point. So appreciate all the recommendations that came out of the staff report, and I know this is just a receive and file this evening, but I expect a more robust conversation at the council in future with, you know, firm, you know, ordinances that we can eventually adopt. So, any other comments? All right. Well, with that, we are moving on to board's commissions reports. Good evening. Let's go ahead and start with traffic safety.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We don't have anything. I did want to mention that I am not Bradley Sullivan, and Bradley Sullivan is unfortunately going through some medical issues, and so I'm sure the council knows what those are, and we're obviously hoping for a speedy recovery for him.
Yeah. We wish him all the best. Good evening.
Good evening. Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Oh, no kidding. Mr. Schwank, how about you?
Oh, a couple of quick items. We had our monthly meeting last night. Couple of things to highlight. So, we got an update on swim buddies and our junior guards. We've recognized all those volunteers, and it was really nice. We had a packed house, one of those meetings where you're just excited to see the community be involved in programs like that. Over 4,000 swim lessons over the summer, and these kids helped with every aspect of that. So that was pretty nice to see. And then there was a consensus from the commission about just how hard community services works under Director Hawkins, and how much they care. I mean, there was a lot of, it was a very feel-good meeting last night, if you will. So I just sort of want to pass that on. Everyone's excited from homeless outreach to swimming, so it was a great meeting. And then, we would not be the fun commission if it weren't for, let me get that out there, Build a Boat Regatta. Thankfully, this is engraved 2017, so I don't ever have to give it back, but we will be battling it out this Friday night to build a boat. It is a great event. It's sold out. Every year it's sold out, but it is fun to watch, so come and build a boat with us and sync with us as well. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. Captain Hayes, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Can I have a report from FIRE?
Yes, so in the month of July, we responded to over 700
Yes, so in the month of July, we responded to over 700 calls within the city. We responded to the Cranston Fire with several units there, and now they're supporting the state need for all the fire equipment and personnel, so our thoughts are with them as they're away from their families battling these fires. We did lose another firefighter just two days ago. Pretty sad moment, and so I'm going to be going up to Mendocino to help support them after we leave the council member, council tonight. I'd like to highlight the Temecula Citizens Corps a little bit, our volunteer group out there that does so much, and we, we think of them as this citizen volunteers that are out there in, in disasters, but there's so much more. They do neighborhood watch outreach, and they work with our Temecula PD and with fire, so we do have some training opportunities coming up with our CERT classes. I mean, we just experienced a 4.4 earthquake before council, so it's a highlight to be prepared before the emergency does happen. So, you can go to our website, temeculaca.gov, and search for CERT groups. It's great for teens. They get 20 community service hours. And then, in the month of September, on September 8th, at Skyview Park, we're going to be hosting a Southwest CERT Field Day where we're going to take all the previous CERT members that have taken CERT and are out there in the public and offer public training for them, and we hope to see you and the rest of the council out there making an appearance. We're, we're combining with Marietta to have up to 250 members out there and going through fire extinguishers, size up, all those different things out there, so we'd love to see you out there. And you can look that up on Eventbrite and just search Southwest Training CERT. So, on a lighter note, our Station 95 did have a chef challenge from ARIA at their fire station. It was our home turf, and we won, so Station 95 did beat the chefs over there at ARIA, and so we can hold that for a year.
All right. Well, congratulations.
No trophy, though.
No trophy, but the pride regardless. All right. Well, I know you guys have been doing a tough job across the state right now, and it's turning out to be one of the most serious fire years we've had in California, and we're breaking all sorts of records again, so all our best to folks at Fire Department, CAL Fire in particular, and stay safe out there. Real quick on that, I know, I still noticed that about nine percent of our calls are false alarms, and I know that that's a traditional thing in, in police as well. Where are we on, on creating some sort of regulation on, on dealing with false alarms and sort of cracking down on the habitual bad actors in the city that lack, you know, appropriate maintenance and all that?
I think we discussed, we need to, we need to put together the data between both police and fire, and I, I think the way we left it off was we'll, we'll agendize it and we'll bring it back to council, and if it becomes a, you know, an ordinance or something this council wants to consider for fines and citations and things that we discussed, and so maybe in the next 30 days, we'll bring something back.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Wonderful. Thanks, sir. Let's see, who do we have next? City managers report.
You know, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, I'd like to go back to items 14 and 15. I, I can't let, let that go without saying something about what, what was approved tonight, and I'm going to start off by acknowledging Ms. Hennessy over there because she pushed for the refinancing of, of the debt, which led to the really orchestration of, of the financing plan that you saw tonight. So, Jennifer, thank you. Really, really well done. I mean, we, we pride ourselves here on operating like a private business, and tonight, I think, was a really good example of, of knocking things out of the park. And for the public that doesn't, hasn't really connected the dots, you're getting a new community center. You're getting a new community center in the center of town with a swimming pool in a much-needed area, and it's a building that used to be operated by the YMCA that we inherited, but we couldn't necessarily take over because it wasn't built properly. So, tonight, with the approval, we're going to deliver a new community center to the youth, to adults, to special needs in Margarita Park. How can you not be excited about that? So, I mean, my hats off to the team, some really creative financing that went on. My thanks. Also, I just wanted to put a shout-out to, to the firefighters, too. I mean, between the Cranston Fire and the Holy Fire, and then we had a fire in Meadowview, you know, this weekend, and, and knocking those things down the way we did, I mean, it's, it's Temecula safe, and I just, my thanks to, to all the men and women that were out there working hard, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. And city attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to report tonight that we have a settlement in the case involving AgCappy Contractor and Allied World Insurance, under which the Allied Insurance is the surety for the Park and Ride Project will pay the city the sum of $500,000, and that should be finalized within the next couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you. All right. And one quick mention, wanted to let folks know that our very important Officer Decker, our police dog, is recovering from surgery right now, and next couple of days are going to be important to keep an eye on her, and hopefully she recovers, and we'll keep folks updated. So, keep fingers crossed, and all our prayers go out to a very important part of our police department, and the only dog in Temecula who has attacked the mayor, so, you know, intentionally. It was fun, all in good intentions, not just because she was angry, but we do, we all wish her the best. And in closing tonight, wanted to close the meeting in memory of Rose Feasing.
Thank you.
Move a German.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.